Call the meeting to order if you would join us in the pledge of the flag, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, eternal, and immortal.
Thank you, and welcome to our, again, combination in person and virtual meeting. If you're vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask. If you are not vaccinated, we ask that you wear a mask. And they are available back on the table as you walk in the door, as are agendas to the meeting if you did not pick one up when you came in. Our agenda was posted on the website, on Facebook page, and posted on our meeting room door along with instructions for how to participate in that meeting virtually if someone so chose. Meeting is recorded and will be available through the township's website. Written minutes will also be available on the website, once they're approved by the board. There will be two opportunities for public comment, virtual or in person. After being recognized by the chair, if it's in person, we ask that you step up to the microphone, state your name and address before addressing the board. The township manager is monitoring the virtual meeting. And for those who may be speaking, make sure we're close to the microphone and speaking clearly so that Wendy, who is virtual tonight, will be able to hear appropriately for the purpose of doing minutes. With that, we'll do a self introduction of the supervisors.
Steve Breck.
Jeff Rogers.
Art Rutledge.
Bob Brown.
Jeff Ronal.
Right, to my left is Todd Ziegler, the Township Manager, and up on the screen is Wendy Brown, our Recording Secretary, and Tim Buck, our Solicitor. And is that all we have, first, at the moment? All right, with that, we can get to our agenda. First up on the agenda is approval of the minutes, first of the regular meeting held on July 7th.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes from July 7th.
I have a motion, and a couple of seconds. We'll let Wendy choose which one she wants. Give it to Dave, okay? And are there any questions or comments on the minutes? If not, we shall call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, the minutes are approved. We had a continuation meeting on July 28th. That was a single-subject meeting, and the minutes for that have been provided to the board as well. Are there questions or comments?
Make a motion for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, the minutes are approved. For those who are out there, we get a packet that includes these minutes in all, several days before the meeting, so we've had plenty of time to review them and ask questions, even of Todd, before the meeting. So that usually lets us dispense with them pretty quickly here in our meeting. Have a Treasurer's report up for approval.
I'll second that.
All right, Todd, did you want to make a comment on?
Yeah, anything I was just going to mention is, it'd be nice if we really did take in $859,000 last month, but that's not the case. The, we did receive, of that $859,000, we did receive the American Rescue Plan funds, $352,000. And it actually shows up in the revenue twice, because we received it deposited into our general fund, but then we created an independent fund just for the American Rescue Funds. So you'll see on the expense side, that 352 coming out of the general, but then it got deposited into the American Rescue Fund, so it really was 352,000, not, you know, 704. It's just for accounting purposes, when we do the grand total, it shows up as deposits, so.
We also have.
You made us work on expenditures still.
Yes.
From American Water.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a story behind that.
Actually.
But all the information's accurate.
Actually, it was in descending value, right?
Yes.
There was $57,000 in insurance. Now, that's once a year for all of our insurances, liability insurance.
Property liability.
And you're feeling as we've checked that periodically for competitiveness.
Yeah, it's probably been two, three years, but it's been holding pretty steady.
It is a township resident that works for the company, and hopefully has the.
Our local agent is Keller Brown.
Right.
And the owners are actually township residents, but we have put it out for proposals, like I said, two weeks, probably more, three years ago, but no one actually came any closer.
So we may be sometime soon looking at that again, but we feel that's competitive. And I think there was one correction before we vote, and that was.
Well, that's right.
That was on the expenses for about a third of the way down, where it says Keystone Pump &amp; Power, rental with trash pump and accessories, Haimtown Park, that's really for Lion Road.
The expense is correct in the account, it's just a description.
Just a description, so just to point that out. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote. We have it.
Okay.
There was a little bit of discussion.
Aye.
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 Five votes for the, to the affirmative, so the Treasurer's Report is approved. One of the things, maybe just to stick in here before we move forward, since it's a Treasurer's Report, you know what, I'll wait till we get to your report, to bring that up. So we would be the first opportunity for public comment. I would just request that if you have any comments regarding the Amish school, that we hold those until we reach that on the agenda, which will be very soon, and let us kind of get to a couple other things. I believe, I don't see our, good, I don't want to pronounce his name, our State Police Court. I thought I might get arrested for mispronouncing the name. That's kind of what it looked like, that's how I was going to try it. But if he shows up later on, we'll certainly give him an opportunity. He's on the agenda just to give us a periodic report on what's going on in the township from a crime and, I guess, enforcement standpoint. So is that, Todd, we had, is there any other, anybody wants to comment on anything else other than the Amish School House at this time? Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Marv Martin, I live there on Holly Road. My concern is the traffic on the road. Touched on this a little bit at the last meeting, and basically with the Amish people and their horse-drawn carriages and the speed on that road and the amount of traffic on that road, it'd be nice, I don't know if it's possible, but it'd be nice if we could see speed bumps installed on that road. When I first moved to my home in 82, after my property line, it was dirt, and it might have been five cars a week go through there. There's 10 houses on the road, plus the farm, and it's just constant traffic, morning and evening, sometimes during the day. And it's at a high rate of speed, they go through there pretty fast. But we have the high school people, the track teams, girls and boys, run after school, sometimes on the weekends, on that road, and it's just, looks like a disaster waiting to happen, as far as two combinations, the people and the cars and the speed and the amount of cars.
Was yours the letter that we received?
Yes, my wife had written them up, yes.
Well, always, speed bumps are, there's good and bad, they're bad for snowplows. But our first up, and you may have noticed, we've installed speed monitoring signs there. We typically leave those there for probably four to six weeks. And they do a couple things, they indicate the amount of traffic and the speed. You know, at the present time, they're not flashing.
Right.
And that gives us kind of a database for the first couple of weeks, then the flashing will be turned on for probably four weeks or so. So the first thing is that we can collect some data and look at that. I think as far as the school, that's their option and their risk. If they think it's risky, they shouldn't be running there.
Exactly.
You know, that's how I look at that.
That's true.
But so, give us a chance to look at the monitoring, to see what we see, and we'll certainly have, you'll get the results of that, whatever they are, we'll share that with you, and then have some discussion about it, as we kind of have some hard numbers in front of us. Make sense?
Makes sense, yes.
We appreciate you bringing the concern.
Thank you.
Always do that. Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the board at this time? Okay, we'll have another time later on, should somebody choose to. With that, we have a couple ordinance and resolutions, and Todd, I guess maybe you want to read us into those.
Yeah, the solar, alternative energy, I think, I don't know if everyone got my email, we just simply ran out of time to do a good thorough review, so we hope to have those next month. As far as assigned ordinance amendments, two months ago, the board authorized for that ordinance to be advertised for adoption. There were some things that came up that brought Keith and I back to take a look at it. And you have a copy that was placed at your seat, and the only thing that's additional from what you have already authorized is found on page nine, which identifies temporary signs to include banners and flags, except for the United States flag, and also provides for the change in the penalties, which was $600 per violation per sign, to more of a graduated penalty of $300 for the first offense, $600 for the second offense, and $1,000 for the third and each subsequent offense. So those two that are highlighted in yellow are the only two additions from what you've already authorized for advertisement. So if you're okay with those two, I would just say is that you reauthorize that for advertisement for next month.
Any questions regarding those couple of changes? Or a motion?
The advertisement of the signed text amendment.
We have a motion and a second, you're just too late, Bob, they're getting there ahead of you. We have a motion and a second, that would approve the revised sign regulation to be advertised. Questions before we vote? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes for the affirmative, so we're clear to go ahead and re-advertise that one, and I think I appreciate delaying on solar rather than rushing it through, that gives us time, we want to make sure it's right when we get there, so I don't think we have any problem with that as a board. All right, the next item up then is the Unrunk Amish Parochial School. Is there anyone who wants to comment before we start to look at it? You look like you're. Can you come up to the, we can hear you here, but they can't hear you.
My name is Sheila O'Rourke, I'm an attorney representing the school, and I'm not sure if you were looking for public comment before we began our presentation, but I wanted to identify myself and just note that I had some introductory comments for the board.
Okay.
So with that, I'm joined this evening by Chris Robenstein, who has been working with the school on the site development and the land development plans, and Mr. Mark Lick, who is a member of the trustees for the school, as well as some other members of the community.
We know most of them well, thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. And so just before we got started this evening, looking at the land development plans, I just wanted to offer a little bit of background on the discussion that we've been having with regard to the development right. And I recognize that there's a lot of history over the past few months that the board is well aware of. But just over the past week, as you're most likely aware, we have submitted, we've looked at the zoning ordinance, and it's our opinion that the ordinance does not call for the utilization of a development right for a small school to be constructed in the Ag District. So we had submitted a letter to the township outlining our legal position. That letter was reviewed, and we received a letter back from Mr. Ziegler outlining the township's position. And we are reviewing and processing that letter, but it appears that there is an honest disagreement as to the legal analysis of the zoning ordinance. So that's in the background. The land development plan that has been submitted to you this evening has the property history and the notes, just as it was reviewed by staff and reviewed by the Planning Commission, that states that a development right will be utilized. That note exists on the plans. While we disagree with it, we do not see any reason to hold up the approval of these plans for an issue that does not have anything to do with the site design or with other elements of the Saldo. So for that reason, it's our proposal and suggestion that these plans be considered and approved this evening. And we would continue to note our opposition and objection to the utilization of a development right. But we would suggest that that's better dealt with, as Mr. Ziegler outlined in his letter, either by way of an appeal to the zoning hearing board based on Mr. Ziegler's opinion letter and/or by way of an appeal of the plan note on the plans. So we would suggest to the board that this issue is not directly in front of you this evening. We certainly wanted to discuss it with you, provide the background. But again, we think this is a purely legal issue that can be dealt with after the approval of this plan, so that the school is able to proceed, begin construction on the school for this coming school year.
And I think as our manager and actually Assistant Zoning Officer both explained, that's really out of the board's hands, that it's a zoning issue, is a zoning hearing board, and you always have the right to appeal to them.
Yes, we would agree with that, that it's a zoning issue that the plan that's presented.
Yeah, I've looked at the plans, and as they're presented, they would, I think, meet, you know, when our requirements would be here. I hear your opposition, but clearly that shows using one, so that would let us move forward, I think. Obviously, it's up to the board, and that's the second thing we'll look at on this list.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so anybody else that wants to speak? So the first item on the board are a number of modifications. They have all been reviewed by staff and the Planning Commission, and both have recommended that they all be approved. There are no longer any outstanding issues on the C.S. Davidson letter, although I guess that comes up when we get to the land development plan. So you've all seen the modifications, do you want to go through them one by one, or are there there questions on any particular one?
The modifications were already completed, correct?
The modifications were already before staff, we recommended approval to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of all the modifications.
There were some variances that were approved by the zoning hearing board.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
Right, yes, they've already been approved, and of course, that's nothing.
That was in the C.S. Davidson letter.
Yes, I think you're right, yes.
All right.
So this is looking at the modifications. I think maybe we can just approach them, does anybody have any questions on any particular modification? The people here that can answer those, if there are. And if there are not, why there be a motion?
Make a motion to approve the modifications.
And there are, just so we get the total, there are. Two, three, four. There are only four, oh, no, eight, seven, eight, am I correct? So the motion would be to approve.
The modifications on the HLS letter dated July 12, 2020.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, are there any questions? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, so the eight modifications are approved. And now we have before is the land development plan was also recommended by both staff and Planning Commission that this be approved.
There were, you have a copy of the C.S. Davidson letter, and you're packed it from July 14th. Items two, three, six, and then on the back, zoning ordinance comments, two, three, and four. On the back, the zoning ordinance comments, those were all variance requests, which were all approved with conditions by the zoning hearing board. Items two, three, and six under Saldo, they have all been addressed and are completed on the plan.
You thought that there may need to be a couple typographical adjustments.
I think there are two minor things that I think probably should be addressed, but will not affect the recording of the plan, I think that can still move forward. Both of these are on the parcel history table. One is, Chris, I think, I'm suspecting that was probably a typo, because it's 100.18 acres, and it says remaining 101.18, so.
Do they need to be switched, or is that going to be 99.18?
It, pardon? Yes. Right.
So then, we just need to switch those two.
Here, let me pull.
Are you talking about this one?
That's an acre.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an acre deal, that would be 100.
Right, and that's the thing, the main tract, 100.18. Yeah, because it should not include, that's a totally separate, independent parcel, correct?
We should just change that.
Yeah, and we can change that by hand, that we don't have to go back and get all signatures and everything. And the only other thing that I had, that I think, and this goes back, Attorney O'Rourke, you'll probably understand this, this note says, "No subdivision of existing parcel two is proposed under this plan." And while it's not a formal subdivision, you know, our interpretation of the ordinance is that any leased parcels is considered a subdivision. So I just think that statement should be removed off of the plan. Do you foresee any issues with that? No, I mean, so. So with.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said I do not have an objection.
Okay.
I do have one additional proposal.
Okay. Yeah, address the board, that's.
Can you come up to the microphone again?
So.
Thank you.
With regard to the parcel history, in an email to Mr. Ziegler, I had suggested a note of opposition, which Mr. Ziegler objected to and did not think that would be acceptable to the board. But I wonder if the board would consider a note that simply states the schoolhouse utilization of one right, unless it is determined by the zoning hearing board or court that a development right for the school does not have to be used.
I don't think there's a need to do that, if the zoning hearing board decides, then.
Well, I guess my question would be, is if the zoning hearing board decides that there is not one utilized, could there not be some type of addendum that would be recorded at the plan?
I think there are.
You know, and the recorder needs.
That it could be addressed.
Yeah, I think that's, and Solicitor Buck may want to add to this, but I would think a cleaner way would be to do some kind of written addendum and record that and reference this plan if the zoning hearing board rules in the.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my suggestion would be a both and.
Yeah.
Approach.
Mr. Buck? Did I hear Mr. Buck's request for Mr. Buck? Tim, you want to offer any comment?
First, I have to unmute, then I can speak. I think the plan that we're going to record should be correct and should not have contingencies on it, respectfully. And if indeed the landowner goes to the zoning hearing board and a different determination is reached, then then we'll correct that in the record with a revised plan. I think that's the correct way to do it, and not to place a contingency on a recorded plan.
Yeah, I would have problems voting for a plan with a contingency on it.
Thanks for your consideration, yeah.
Sure. Did we come to concurrent agreement that we remove that?
Yeah, so my recommendation of board would be, if you're comfortable with the plan, like I said, all the C.S. Davidson comments have been addressed, we've received the security bond and so forth. Just if you're.
Make a conditional upon this, too.
Make it conditional that we correct the remaining size of the parcel, that acreage, and then to strike the statement that says, "No subdivision of existing parcel number two is proposed under this plan."
Are there any other questions from the board?
I believe it was answered, but just to clarify, if we approve the plan as it is in front of us, and the zoning hearing board comes back and says they don't need to use a development right, they don't have to go through and redo anything with the plan, that adjustment can be made through an addendum, like what you were saying?
You know, I'm, yeah, I'm getting this from the Solicitor, so.
Okay, okay. Well, that's the sign language, okay, wonderful, all right, thank you.
All right.
I would go ahead and make that motion, if there are no other objections, to approve the land development plan for the Amish parochial school contingent upon the adjustment being made to the acreage error, as well as striking the sentence, "No subdivision of existing parcel two is proposed under this plan" in the parcel history section of the plan.
All right, thank you for the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions before we vote? Jeff, you look like you're studying there. Okay, I'll call for the vote then.
Aye.
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 I'd like to vote for us for approval of the plan with those two changes or corrections or conditions, I guess. So it is approved. Thank you all for coming. All right, if we move on, do we have somebody here from Republic? Okay, if I might, with the board's concurrence, so that gentleman doesn't have to stay all night unless he wants to, would we agree to move that piece of new business up forward? Okay, all right. Todd, do you want to kind of introduce this one, maybe?
Sure, yes.
This is the first item under new business for those people out there that were moving.
Starts with the email, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Sir, do you mind coming up to the mic then? Yeah, the.
Why don't you give us your name and address first?
Jay Enoch, I'm the Division Manager at Republic Services. The address is 3730 Sandhurst Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Jamie, what was your last name again?
Enoch.
Enoch, okay.
So I just wanted to address Todd's email that we had received a couple weeks ago in regards to missed pickups and service and anything associated with our services. We started the contract July 1st of 2019. Todd had mentioned that he was going to move to try to get fines instituted against us for missed pickups. And my response to that is, I just wanted to show kind of our service history since we started the contract and what it's looked like from then till now. When you look at the service that we've provided since July 1st of 2019, our service accuracy, meaning every single home counts as one, and we count missed pickups and we provide that to the township. To date, through two years, our service accuracy is 99.89%. We've serviced the township 540,000 times. We've had 579 missed pickups during that time, all provided to the township. Over the course of the two years, the first six months, then the full year of twenty twenty. And then the, the, the six months so far in twenty twenty one. Our accuracy rate has been ninety nine point eight four percent in twenty nineteen. Ninety nine point nine two in twenty twenty and ninety nine point nine in twenty twenty one so far. Our missed pickups per week. As you go through the, the three-year period, uh, in twenty nineteen, it was eight and a half missed pickups per week. In twenty twenty, it was four point two missed pickups per week. And so far year-to-date in twenty twenty one, it's been five point four. Okay, so our service uh, history has been pretty consistent over the time. Look, we strive for a hundred percent, we do. Um, we've had some obstacles with, with COVID and increased volumes. We've had some obstacles as far as um, customers not paying their bills. But we, we still feel like we've provided that same consistent service. And like I mentioned, we, we, we strive for a hundred percent, but we're, we're falling just short of that. But I would say our, our service from January or July first till now has been consistent year after year after year.
Well, I guess just for a comment, when I read the emails. I was rather disturbed because it looked to me like you were satisfied with ninety nine point nine percent, and we aren't.
Right.
Um, if you're the resident that only gets picked up once a week. And you've got a stinking bag of trash that didn't get picked up, uh, then you have a right to be upset. I don't believe you offer a credit to those residents.
Right.
Which you should, if you're not, you probably say you'll pick twice as much up the next week, but. They really ought to be given a credit for that miss, and sometimes you're missing a whole street. And I think as a township, we don't expect anybody to ever be missed. And if you accept less than that, then speaking for myself, that's a real issue for me, the board. And I certainly think that what gets attention, and I tell you this from all of our. Efforts in, in zoning enforcement, what gets attention are fines. When people start to pay, they start to comply. So, my own opinion, if you don't want fines, be perfect from now on. And if you're not, then we should have the right to fine. Uh, Todd, if you want to kick in or the rest.
One thing I want to just add is what I think uh, prompted me to come to the board. They asked them to authorize us to uh, in the office here to start issuing fines for missed collections is. There, some of these are just repetitive, constant. Uh, West Forest Avenue, we have one property owner who's adjacent to the burn, he's up from, from Cherry Lane. And the man is just, he's disgusted, he calls in here all the time to us. Um, and, you know, and these are just the calls that we receive, we certainly don't get all the calls for missed collections. Um, and that gentleman is missed, I, I swear it's every other week, he's not picked up. And the other one where we have had a lot of problems repeatedly is on the Pleasant Valley Road between the two. Uh, train bridges. Um, I understand that it takes a smaller truck and so forth, and I know when we've. Gotten calls that there were missed collections, you know, the response is, and not you, but, but. You know, staff from within Republic is, oh, well, we had a truck that broke down. Well, that, you know, that's fine, I understand that, but it's still. Republic Services obligation to get out there and pick it up if three people come out with pickup trucks.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's, it's kind of like. Frankly, the way I look at it, it's just like you would not tolerate that from the electric company or the cable company or cell phones. If we didn't have service every once in a while, they say, well, you know, we're giving you ninety nine percent service.
Right.
We're not happy.
You know. Another instance that I'm aware of was two weeks in a row, they skipped an area on Glen Valley. And those residents, I mean, they trash all over the place out through there.
Yeah, and like I said, I know we don't begin to get all the calls for missed, missed calls. And when we do get calls, usually it's because, and again. It's out of your personal control, but it's the company as a whole, is the eight hundred customer service is just.
Yeah, I get a lot of complaints on that.
Yeah.
They, they, they don't feel there's anybody they can really talk to that listens or will make anything happen. To the other side, I will say I, the one compliment I've got is that very, and, and what I've seen, very. Active in taking care of the, the really bulk items. They, they are handled well, so I mean.
Yeah, we certainly try to stay in front of that.
I give you a plus, that seems to go away quick, and I've, I've had comments. Oh geez, I didn't know they would take that, when people will ask me, well, I got a cabinet, I got a refrigerator, I said, you can put that out to the trash. I didn't know that, and it's picked up promptly, but, I mean, so there's one attaboy there. But, you know, i- if you're, if it's your trash and it doesn't get picked up and there's nobody you can call but the township. And there's not a lot we can do at, at that point in time. Um, and when that happens repeatedly, people get really frustrated. Um, and like I said, I know all the people do not call the township, some will tell me. They just put it back in and say, but, but like where I live, you can't keep your trash outside, it's gotta be in your garage or. And you know, you put that in there for an extra week, that's, that's not so good.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, look, we, we certainly strive for perfection every single day of the week. Um, we definitely see instances where we have missed people, and we, we typically will return within twenty four hours. We do not ask people to hold it for another week, void of weather-related events, we, we have done that. Um, but on a missed pickup, our, our response is within twenty four hours, we've got to recover that, so. Um, we, we typically try to, when we do miss somebody, we recover pretty quickly.
It, it's a major job, I appreciate that, and you have the COVID, and you have probably wage issues.
We do.
But you're the experts in that, and that's why you have the contract.
Yep.
And you bid on it to take it, so you knew what we required and you knew what the consequences should be, so. Um, from my point, I think we should give Todd that authorization. And you can await it by not missing pickups, but I'll kind of sit back and let the rest of the board.
So, so my question on that is, uh, in, in some cases, I, what does that process look like from a fine standpoint? We have seen many instances where customers will bring it out after we've gone through. Um, so a- at what point um, validates a missed pickup? Because there's a financial impact to this, and you said, um, when fines start to get addressed, we want to validate them as, as true and, and. Valid misses, um, so that way we're, we're getting graded accurately and.
And, and I understand that, um, and, and I've been in this business long enough to know that sometimes people. Uh, on occasion will call and say they missed my collection, but they didn't put it out until ten o'clock in the morning, and I understand that. So, so we would not, you know, base it on every phone call, we will investigate it, we'll work with Scott.
Yep.
Um, to, to validate it. Um, and then at that point, if we make the determination that, you know, this really was a missed pickup. Um, then, then we'll, then we'll proceed. Um, and, and he's correct, there are some times that we do get calls.
I'm sure.
Yeah, that, that are not valid, but um, again, like I said, what really prompted this for, for me. Was these repeated misses in the same areas over and over and over. And, you know, I understand that there can be a miss, but when it's repetitive, um, you know. I, I, I think it needs to be corrected.
Yeah, I mean, what we deal with then are, this never happened before, why did you guys ever change? Trash haulers, so. And of course, we explain the bidding and all that, but at any rate, that's kind of what they compare it to, I didn't have this problem before. Now I do, so they have something to compare it to, but.
Missed. Pickups, I mean, on the consumer part, where they don't put things off. Uh, sometimes like, you know, as a homeowner, we get used to, oh, they come by at ten o'clock. So we don't have to put our trash out the night before, worry about wind, birds, animals, stuff like that. But then what happens, all of a sudden the cycle changes, it's six, six thirty in the morning, and you go, you know. So, is there some type of consistent schedule? You can set up for an area?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we ask residents, regardless of municipality, to put their trash out the night before. Because that does fluctuate, uh, vacation season, we have fill-in drivers that'll step in and, and maybe run that route. Maybe a little bit differently, maybe there's a breakdown of a truck and we're running a little bit behind. So there's, there's factors that go into timing associated with the pickup. That's why we always ask our residents to put it out the night before, so we can ensure that we're there on time. Regardless of whether it's six AM or ten AM, um, to service your, your home.
Todd, I was wondering, do we have a lot of communication, if someone would call and you said they got missed, you'd be able to contact them?
Yeah, we, we do have a direct contact, Wendy usually handles all that, and she, she works with Donna.
Yep.
Um, so we do have, have local contact.
Um, I, I would imagine we could use the um, MyGov app. For, for that.
That as well, yeah.
Uh, by way of reporting, at least. Um, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it.
I am not.
Uh, we just started last month, I believe. Uh, with the uh, the, the MyGov application. Um, and, well, I'm.
Well, it's just one where people can text it, you know, complaints and so forth, uh, to the township.
Okay.
We, we don't have that full year yet, because it'll be when we do the September newsletter that that message gets out to everyone. But uh, so that email sometimes will get uh, typically Wendy, Wendy gets the phone calls.
Okay.
But uh, like I said, it's, it's, it's the ones that we have an issue with is that they're so repetitive. And I, I'm not talking about once or twice, I'm talking dozens of times. Um, and uh. You know, as the chairman said, in, in, in my professional opinion, if, if those are focused on, it probably won't be an issue. And as I just mentioned a little while ago, that when we get a complaint, we will investigate it, we won't automatically. Issue a fine, but, you know, depending on our findings, that is what we would.
Yeah, I, I think if you got one complaint every three months, we wouldn't be.
Right.
Talking about this.
Exactly.
But unless it was the same person every three months, then we would.
So on our behalf, we'll, we'll, we'll get with you uh, next week and follow up on those hot button areas.
Yep.
Um, to ensure service.
So at this point, what you're asking for is the board authorization to, at your discretion. To assess fines where you feel that's necessary.
Correct.
That a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay.
And that fine structure is one hundred dollars per, up to a thousand per week?
Well, it's um, it's a hundred dollars per missed stop. Or a thousand dollars for a mass miss, which could be a full street or, or a community.
I believe it's ten dollars. Shrewsbury Township is also right to assess contractor up to ten dollars for each individual violation, up to five hundred dollars for each.
Copy of the uh. That, that might be a copy out of the old contracts, here you can. Yeah, I think that was the wrong one, here's a copy. So, um, and, and something that may help, and maybe you can pass this along. Um, and I actually think it's spelled out in our contract, and I know COVID uh, certainly played a role. Um, but uh. The supervisor, we asked if they stop in at least once a week.
Yep.
Um, and that, that rarely happens. Yeah.
Yeah, I can have a.
You say that rarely?
That rarely happens, in the beginning it ha- it started, but um. Yeah, I, I, I don't know, and it's not like you can get a phone call, like, hey, what's going on? Do you have any complaints, any concerns or whatever? And I think if that communication is resumed, would probably help with some of this as well.
Isn't that even spelled out in the contract?
That's what I said, there, that, there is something I'm pretty sure in there about checking in with the township office.
Yeah, I, I remember seeing that, what, and it was weekly.
At this point, would you prefer a phone call or a physical visit?
Um, either one is fine, as long as they're checking in here weekly, so. If we, if we have any cause or concerns, we can express them and share them and. And ideally, probably should call in here at the end of the day on Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
Um, but uh, but have, if you can, just have Scott contact me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Friday.
Well, I was gonna say, Scott knows.
Yeah, contractors should report to the township office before ten AM of the first business day following data collection. To advise of any collections missed because of. No items being placed out, refuge left standing, breakdown of equipment, and advise of any complaints or. So that's, that's not being done either.
Right.
I think we just need some attention.
Okay.
Um, any other questions? Otherwise, uh, is there a motion? The motion would be to uh, give Todd the discretion to find, and by the way, we don't. We don't find to make money, when we find is because it's kind of our last resort to get results. Alright, so the motion on the floor would be to give Todd the discretion to find in accordance with the contract. For a second. I'll second. We have a motion and a second, is there further conversation? A call for the bid, for the bid, call for the course.
I.
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 I, five posts affirmative, so Todd, you have that direction, and please don't make us do that.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, if we get back to the uh, original agenda, I think we were to reports. I believe, I hope I'm right there, and the manager's report would be up first. Todd, anything you want to add to what you've given?
Uh, only just a reminder, uh, having there the twenty twenty two operating capital budget requests. If you have anything in particular for a project or particular expense. For next year, if you can just make sure I get that back at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Other than that, uh, if anyone has any questions on my report.
Any questions to Todd, and you do have a copy of uh, Mr. Martin's letter in there, he spoke to us about it a little bit earlier. Anything else? Nothing of Todd? Um. I think maybe here is a good. Uh, no, I'll wait, I'll wait, I got one thing to bring up, I'll do it when we get down a little further. Does the solicitor have anything he'd like to say to us tonight?
Uh, no, other than thank you for allowing me to attend uh, via Zoom, thank you.
We can hear you well and strong, so it's working good.
Good.
Uh, so we have the zoning officer's code enforcement report. Um, as you can tell from the report, everybody's been busy. Lots of uh, sewage enforcement, lots of zoning issues, lots of codes enforcement. One of the things I'd like to suggest is, one of the things on here, as you read through it, is that um. There was an issue with a uh. Burning of some hazardous material, and uh. The district court did fine for the township, but they have not assessed the fine. Whatever that is, I'd like to recommend that we. Transfer that money to the fire department, because they really had to spend the money to. Um, respond to citizens' complaints of the smoke and. You know, what was going on, and a couple of them testified at the uh, hearings. I would think whatever number of fire companies responded that are local to the township. That whenever that fine is assessed that, we just take that and donate that to the fire companies involved. I think that would.
I'd support that.
Not a lot of that money, but I think it would, I don't know whether we need a.
I would do that by motion since it's.
But money. Okay. Anybody?
You want to make the motion, I'll second it.
I'll make a motion that whatever money comes from the. Fine for, and Todd, if you can help me specifically name it on this list, Mark, it's a Shrewsbury, right?
Yes.
Okay, that whatever is assessed as a fine by Judge Sweeney, um, would in turn be given to. The, uh, distributed equally to whatever number of the fire companies in our area, Glen Rock, Shrews. Berry and Freedom, whichever ones responded, that we would distribute that to them.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second discussion. We shall call for a vote.
I.
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 Like a nice gesture to the fire companies, and there won't be a lot of money, but they might appreciate that we think of them. They have to go out, you know, and, and shouldn't really have to. Any other questions on a rather lengthy report? Todd, anything you want to offer?
Uh, not under that report now.
Okay. Alright, if we can, then we'll move to the maintenance report.
I do have just two quick comments.
Okay, please.
Well, actually, the one that I had on my list, you already addressed, and that had to do with Holly Road. Uh, that we moved the speed radar study signs from Covington Drive to Holly Road. Um, so those are set up and ready to be activated. Uh, the other thing is the guide rail for lying road. If you recall, um, Hopewell, North Hopewell Township had uh, wanted to get some other pricing. Um, our initial proposal. Our initial proposal came in at $30,250. They did check with their two other vendors that they had in mind. One came in at just a little over $40,000 and the other one was a little over $42,000.
Do we get ours locked in in time?
Yeah, actually, I I went back to them and asked if the quote was still valid. And they asked them if they had any used guide rail that they could use with that as well. They they had one or two pieces, but they actually dropped it to 29,000.
Wow.
Yeah, so I did authorize that order last week. It was the 28th of July and it'll be 68 weeks for installation.
Okay.
So soon as that guy rails in, we'll be able to do the final paving and then it can open.
You're gonna have to have a big party down there on that side after all this time.
You mentioned Covington. Did we get the final results from that?
I did not get them tabulated, but you will get those. Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
And initial results are that there's not a.
More than issue.
Yeah.
All right. And how long are we anticipating having them on? I apologize, is the name of the road?
Holly Road.
Holly.
Well, probably.
Two weeks plus four.
Yeah, probably about six weeks. Particularly right now, we're we're tracking without school traffic and so forth. And that'll carry us into about three weeks of school traffic as well.
Okay.
Little sense.
Well, does that?
Use. Yeah.
Todd, is speed bumps a big issue? There's no doubt.
Um, there's a difference between speed bumps and speed.
Yeah, we can't put speed bumps out.
Yeah, but but here's the thing is you really, you really need to, and Shrewsbury Borough probably is a good model to follow. And I don't know enough about it, but they do a lot of studying and evaluating.
They're trying to.
But the only thing that I caution about speed homes is you know, it's not always the answer to every speeding issue.
Sure.
And the other problem is there's there's very few roads in York County where there's not some sort of speeding issue at some point in time.
Of course.
And so we'd have to develop some kind of thresholds and criterias to when it warrants a speed bump because we've had various requests every time someone says they're speeding that, you know, put speed home. So if you put them on road A, what's the criteria for putting there? Right, right.
So do we know what a speed hum would do to a horse drawn carriage if that's traveling?
If they go over slow like a car, they're probably okay, but you know, the speed.
They don't have shocks or anything like that.
Speed, the speed homes are wider.
Sure.
And not as high.
I feel like it would be throwing them around.
Yeah. But you know, it's like just in a car, you gotta.
Some people complain because they're noisy. So sometimes you get complaints for that and sometimes the very people that wanted them complain once they get them. But the interesting thing is we've done an analysis on at least three different locations now, including Presidential Heights by PennDOT and there's never been any any trace of hardly, is there an occasional car?
Sure.
That speeds through, yes, but of thousands of cars, it's surprising.
The average speed.
The average speed is.
And and I I don't know about anybody else, but in all the miles I've put on a car, I have never seen speed homes on a rural road. I have never. I never have. I anytime I've seen them, they've always been densely populated areas of housing developments or something. And even I I I've never even seen them on roads with the same volume of like Mount Airy.
I feel like they might have more success calling state police. And have them pull some people over on that road.
Well, what we'll see is we'll we'll see if there's even a problem via the data that we're collecting.
And it's not that speed homes don't serve a purpose, but you know, there's there has to be criteria.
Right. And it's where they're used on what you're trying to do.
Right.
So the first step is we'll have some data to look at and then we can kind of move forward. And PennDOT does have guidelines as to percentiles and things like that that if you exceed them, you should start to look at it. We've never come close to exceeding those on any of the roads. But it's one of the reasons we also got those is that hopefully it gets people's attention and causes them to slow down. I think we've seen it only makes about a two mile an hour difference versus when the sign's off and then when we turn it on after about two weeks. But but it still says Big Brother's watching to some degree. And it would, in answer to maybe Dave, what you said, we could use that as evidence basically to say, state police, we have an issue here. Here's our data. Can you come in? And try try to help us out with this. So it would be helpful for that.
And they also, they also do not always, they can actually go the opposite direction as well. We, when the first ones we had on Mount Airy Road, we were getting complaints about speeding. We conducted our own in-house study and determined that it should have actually been five miles faster than it was posted. And we actually had a state agency LTAP come down and do an independent study. They came back with what we had. And then when we used the speed radar signs, it 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 supported it. So someone wanted it slower and actually all the study results came back and said it should be faster. And we left it where it was. But so it doesn't always favor a slower speed necessarily. So.
All right.
That's all I had under the maintenance report.
Okay. Any questions on the, any other questions on the maintenance report before we leave that? Any questions on the CS Davidson report?
The Culver for emergency, where is that?
That was down here on Reservoir Road between Hayntown and the part that loops up around to the trail.
Across the street. Or like over there.
Near the maintenance building.
My apologies.
If you go down Hayntown, make a left on Reservoir. There's a kind of a bend in the road. There's a stone house in there. That was on our list for next year. But yeah, it we had a.
We anticipate getting that permit.
Yeah, that has to be permitted. Well, we'll start the process. They've started the process. DEP does not permit that quickly.
Fair enough.
Anything else? All right. I don't think we have Stan with this right.
No.
Okay, so we'll skip the EMS report. I think all is well there. So there are no real issues and I thought, well, we'll see that a little bit later on about new freedom. Any questions on the subdivision land development plans or planning, zoning, zoning hearing board report? All right, given none. I think that moves us to committees, just some quick reports. The American Rescue Plan Committee, we really haven't had any activity needed. We've sort of done some budgeting and a look at things. So we did not hold a meeting this month. We had an official MAP meeting this this week. This was the second stakeholder input meeting. I think a lot of progress has been made. They'll now be organizing a public meeting by invitation, basically, which would be municipalities and groups that might want to have some further input on the official map. So that's moving along right on schedule. And we had a sewer committee meeting today. If Dave chairs that, so I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say.
We covered some more history about sewer in the township. Designated members of the committee to go to the next sewer authority meeting, Shrewsbury Borough. And went over municipal authority information. That's pretty much it.
That's right on.
Yes, it was a wonderful meeting.
All right, thank you. And I guess that moves us to supervisors' comments. And I just would note that I attended so many meetings, I'm not going to bore you and list them all in a number of
Very busy July.
Training programs as well. I think I have over 16 meetings and webinars and things. So let's just say it was a busy July. That's exactly right. Comments from other supervisors, though? You want to wish to comment on anything? I must be in a hurry tonight. I think I would mention in comments too, that we are live with what David talked about before. The Shrewsbury Township, what's called Text My Gov, but you now can go online and sign up to get communication from the township and enables you to communicate to the township and get hopefully a quick reaction by sending that communication to the proper place. And I don't know if you want to add anything, whether the first month experience has shown much.
It's been slow. And again, because we just haven't had the opportunity through newsletter and so forth, that comes out in September.
It's posted online, but people have to be looking for it to find it, I'm sure.
So it's online. I would encourage you, if you're interested, to take a look at it. And we'll also be talking about it in the fall newsletters. If we can get enough people involved, we can get a lot of communication going back and forth. Right, that brings us then to old business. I think I guess an update on the sewer lien with Anstein.
Yeah, if you recall, we had the solicitor's office last month send a letter to Mr. Anstein informing him that we were going to execute his lien due to non-payment of his sewer account. I was contacted by Mr. Anstein and it looks like we have a monthly payment schedule established that he will be, after he makes his payment in November, he'll be current.
Okay.
So he'll be making payments over the next five months and that'll bring his account current. And then once that's current, then you know, there's no need to ask to execute.
To the regular. So he's making additional payments right now to be current through November.
Yeah, his quarterly.
It'll go back to whatever the regular.
His his quarterly bill every three months is $233.
Okay.
He's going to be paying $300 a month between now and November to get his account current.
Okay.
So in November, when he makes that last payment, he'll have no payment in December, but then he'll begin the quarterly payment of $233.
January.
Yeah.
Well, good. That's a far better alternative than having to pursue the lien method for everybody, I think. And then we have the engineering services contract we talked about briefly for CS Davidson. I think it's, you reviewed it.
Yes, Tim and Solicitor Bob.
Tim took a look at it as well.
Yes.
So it's pretty standard. It's just they're trying to get everybody under contract, which I guess is picked up as kind of something weak in their side they ought to do. Are there any questions from the board on any terms of the contract or any issues?
I'm assuming we're locked in for a period of time. Does that?
No.
I I noticed it said either party could terminate within seven days.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're just, we're contracted with them until we decide to not.
Correct.
Yep. It's just an annual appointment that we take care of.
I would make a motion to approve the standard form of agreement for engineering services with CS Davidson.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? Harry, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I I vote to the affirmative. So we have approved the standard form of agreement for engineering services for CS Davidson. We move to new business. We've covered the first item with Republic. So we have the agreement that would bring new freedom into the schema, the emergency management group here that we belong to that. So does New, so does Shrewsbury Borough, Railroad Borough, and Glen Rock Borough. To me, this brings it kind of where it should be and brings the the last group in the area into it. So and they will make a contribution in proportion to what we all did initially. I think theirs is 14 or $1500.
If I remember that.
Is that annually?
Well, we we paid annually for the first three years. And then we maxed out the the group where we wanted to have a
Right.
maximum amount in the account.
Okay.
So they're going to pay equivalent to what everyone else paid at the same rate for the first three years, but they're going to do it as one lump sum instead of spreading it out every three.
Think we base it on population?
Yes.
Yeah, so it wasn't the same for everybody, but it's given us a pretty healthy balance, which Stan is very careful about spending, so.
I'm sure. I'm surprised he's not here for this.
I think I think things are just really going very well for that.
On on that note, I would make a motion to approve the joint agreement and amendment to schema intergovernmental agreement, bringing new freedom into the fold.
I'll say.
Have a motion in a second that would accept new freedom into the emergency management group. So discussion before we vote. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I I vote to the affirmative. So we have voted to bring new freedom into the group. Well, let's see, we have the paving for Eastwood Drive.
Yeah, you have in front of you a bid tabulation. We had three bidders for actually milling three inches of asphalt from the street and the parking areas for the townhouses on Eastwood Drive as well as the portion of Covington Drive just to the east of Mount Airy Road. I believe it's a total of 38 townhouses there. The the total bids came in ranging from 148,000 to 158,000. The lowest bidder was Kinsley Construction at 148,414. Of that amount, it's approximately $49,000. That would be the property owner's responsibility. They would be invoiced individually. However, because it's on private property, we need written consent from them. So the bids were just opened a week ago yesterday. So by the time we were able to get the letters out, I believe it was Thursday. So we haven't gotten a response back from everyone at this point in time, but of those that we have, everyone's been agreeable so far. I'd say it's at least 50% if not more that we've heard back from that have agreed to it. They signed the consent for us to do that. And and we also put in what the price is for two parking spaces. It's around 1,100 and a couple dollars. Then, of course, there's a couple with three spaces that are 1,700.
What happens if one or two people?
Well, and and what will happen is if, when the board approves this contract, once we get word back from everyone and we can make a determination, you know, if there's two spaces here, you skip two, another two or four skip, we're not going to be able to do that section. So we're going to be following up tomorrow with additional letters. And again, it was short time. I I think we had a call from a lady today who had never received one yet, but she heard it from her neighbor. So it's floating out there in the mail system somewhere. So we still have time. Today was not a deadline for them. I just asked them to get back. So I had a little bit of a sense if there was really interest or not. And it appears there is. But what will happen, Jeff, if we get to the point where, you know, there's a section of maybe six, eight homes where we just can't do it because of the milling equipment is where the problem is, you know, it's a large piece of equipment. We just will not be able to do that. So we would do a change order to remove that square yardage from the contract.
So there there could be sections that are just kind of a hole.
Well, it's it's paid, but it's not in the best of condition.
Yeah.
But but it's private parking area.
Sure, sure.
So I'd say you have two people that don't agree, but they're not next, not adjacent. So do you?
If we had two out of 38, we will, we will probably be able to do everyone else except for these two.
Okay.
Yeah.
You wouldn't.
It's just if we get, you know, if we had, if we had 10 or so out of 38 and it's kind of all chopped up, but I know our biggest response so far has been on Eastwood Drive and and that's been filling in. And I think you saw our
All right.
Our map out there. We're kind of color coding as we go. So we have a visual.
Fortunately, they don't have an, unfortunately, they don't have an HOA, so we have to deal individually.
Right. We're dealing with 38 individual property.
And and I think to hear what what you were starting to say, Jeff, if if they're not agreeing to pay, then we're not going to pave it because we really don't have a mechanism. I don't believe to force them to pay.
Correct.
And we're not going to use taxpayers' dollars to pay pave private. And we're not going to use taxpayers' dollars to pay, pay private citizens' parking lot. I mean, that we can't do that. This is just weird, you know, in your map and the way that it's located and that it's a township road that puts all the, all the parking. So it's just kind of strange that it's done that way, but that, that's how that road is. So if they pay, we pave. If they don't pay, we don't pave.
Fair enough.
So the cost of the township is about a hundred thousand.
Yeah, we, I, I need a motion to award the, the contract to Kinsley Construction.
Award the contract for Eastwood Drive and Covington Drive?
Yes, I think that's right.
Covington Drive, thank you, to Kinsley Construction, the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, four hundred, excuse me, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, are there any further questions or discussion? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I, I vote to the affirmative, so we will be awarding that contract to CS Davidson. And we have, I think, pretty standard winter maintenance agreement with PennDOT, Todd?
That is correct, and that is to pave
Or pave.
Paving on my Plow snow on a short section of Baltimore Street. And then we plow all of Thistle's Church Road. And the reason they list it separately is we actually go out into Cadorus Township out to two, I think it's two sixteen Manchester Street. Because number one, there's nowhere for us to turn around in the middle. And the other thing, it's just while we're on there, we got most of it, just go to the end, so. And then that is reimbursed by PennDOT in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-five cents.
So a little bit less than oh no, this is going forward, I guess, what they're recommending.
This is what we're receiving for doing.
Correct, yeah. And surprisingly, PennDOT in the past has, if we had severe winters where there was a lot of extra plowing, we have received additional funds.
Nice. I would make the motion to approve the PennDOT winter maintenance agreement.
The twenty-one, twenty-two winter season.
Thank you for the twenty-two, twenty-two winter season. I was looking to see if the date mattered, but that's not attached to the, to the agreement, it's just more of a header. Sorry, that was my motion.
All right, thank you for the motion, is there a second? Have a motion in a second, discussion at all? I think that's just what they project going forward, isn't it?
Correct, this is only for one year.
Yeah, we're just voting for the one year, but they're just saying, hey, this is what we think it'll probably look like. I guess for budgeting purposes, three years to come. All right, we will
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, we have approved the winter maintenance contract with PennDOT. And I think you have a trash waiver request, so.
Yeah, I do have a trash waiver.
Trash waiver request?
No, it's not, it was a verbal through, through other communication.
That ran out of papers.
Now, this is a trash waiver request for three-ten West Railroad Avenue. Megan Shawburn's property, and she actually has not lived in the house, I think, since two thousand and fourteen. So
She's been abandoned all this time?
Yes, but she understands it would only be retroactive to July first.
Right, is, is, is this the farmer's daughter or the house across the street in the mall?
It is the farmer's daughter, Saint Megan, but it's the house across the street that's kind of down in the hill there, it's actually if you're facing that house, it's like the third house up on the left, it's a brick rancher.
That's where three-ten is?
Correct.
So you know it's been empty, it's
Yeah, I know, she's been, I think staying with her father who's ill, been ill.
I'm making a motion to approve that trash waiver request effective July twenty-two-one for property three-ten, what's the railroad acting?
I'll second that.
Thank you, motion in a second, discussion, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, the trash waiver is approved. So the only other we have left is, I don't believe there was any correspondence in the package.
First time that's ever happened.
So that
Three years up?
Yeah, I think you're right. That would bring us to opportunity for closing public comment. Is there anyone who would wish to address the board without anything at this time? Okay, no takers?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn in a second, all right. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it.